Dr. V is up here from Haltem High School and they're gonna come forward and perform for us this evening. We appreciate you guys doing this. I've been looking forward to this a long time.
If you'll stand, we'll sing our national anthem. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose brush dries and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the rum-pours we washed were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red flag had glared up above us as she gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? These are thirteen of Haltem High School's finest out of a program of 275 in our Coral Program. These students do all kinds of styles of music, everything from rock and roll to jazz. And right now, we're going to sing just a very short Renaissance madrigal for you. Madrigals were the pop music of their day in the 16th century. And just like pop music today, they didn't always talk about the most appropriate things. But the difference in the 16th century was rather than saying the inappropriate things, they said fa-la-la-la-la. So if you hear fa-la-la-la-las in a madrigal, you know that something is going down. The madrigal we'll be singing for you is called Tutto lo di. And the translation is, "All day long, you tell me, 'Sing, sing.' Can't you see I've got no breath left? What's the point of all this singing? I wish you'd tell me to ring not the bells, but your cymbal. Oh, how I survive, oh, if I survive, fa-la-la-la-la. I'd like to have you beside me." Tutto lo di. Yes, I changed one word. Tutto lo di, tutto lo di, tutto lo di mi dicchi canta, canta. Tutto lo di, tutto lo di, tutto lo di mi dicchi canta, canta. Non veri con un po' so, non veri con un po' so, repiatare. Ah, che tanta canta, ah, ah. O, che ti dice si, zona, 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 zona. Non le campana nonna, non le campana nonna. Non le campana nonna, non le campana nonna. Ma so' ci il malo tu, o se campò riro, riro, ne. O se campò riro, riro, ne. Si otajo, si otajo, si otajo, so' tan sogni. Si otajo, si otajo, si otajo, so' tan sogni.
That was just wonderful. Thank you, Haltem Singers.
Thank you, Amy. Dr. V, appreciate you joining us tonight and performing. It makes everybody really, really proud to know that in our high school, we have such talented young people and future talented citizens. We appreciate that again. And now for the invocation, if everybody will rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the joy of listening to our children. As they sing and bring music to our eyes and our ears and our hearts, we thank you for Haltem City, a place where children such as these can grow up and be smart and strong and beautiful. We thank you, Father, for this good day, for the opportunity to serve one another and to do well. Father, we ask that you bless this proceeding, bless each and every participant, bless those who hear this at home. Guide us and keep us together, keep us on track, keep our eyes and our ears and our hearts open to one another. We ask this in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have the announcements and events, and Ms. Fran Burns will speak to us.
I'm not sure if this is right or not. Can you hear me okay? Thank you, Mayor. The kids that's just sang certainly were enjoyable, and I think I recognize some of them from the show that they did at the high school, Thoroughly Modern Millie, about a week or so ago. They're excellent performers. Now, the announcements. Haltem Stampede 2007, the 21st Annual, has had its run, and organizers thank all the volunteers, sponsors, and city staff members who pitched in to make it a success. The venue was changed this year with the start-and-finish line moving from the BISD facilities on Bellknap to the Haltem Recreation Center on Broadway. A total of 206 runners and walkers participated this year in the two events. The stampede is coordinated by Haltem City Parks and Recreation along with the Parks Board with help from the following sponsors. The primary sponsor was the Star Telegram. Other sponsors include MICA, Prosperity Bank, Teague-Nallan Perkins Incorporated, Recreation Consultants of Texas, Alamo Homes, IESI, United Glass, CND Construction, Fitco Fitness Center Outfitters, Mrs. Renfro Foods, Schlotzky's Deli of Haltem City, Fort Worth Running Company, Haltem Recreation Ceramics Class, Trophies of Distinction, The Runner, and Marathon Design Group. Thank you, everybody who helped. A Crime Watch Captain's Meeting will take place at 6:30 PM this Wednesday, February 14th, at the Haltem Recreation Center. Join this grassroots fight on crime by attending the meeting and learning about the Neighborhood Crime Watch Program. Free tax preparation assistance is being offered at two Haltem City locations. Help is available from noon to 4:00 PM Mondays at the Senior Center and Thursdays at the library. Those interested in taking advantage of this free help must make an appointment, call the Senior Center at 817-834-8021, or the library at 817-222-7786. Registration for youth baseball, girls softball, and adults softball continues through the end of February at the Recreation Center. For details and information on signing up, call the center. Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, training will begin at 6:00 PM next Thursday, February 22nd, at Haltem City Fire Station Number 1, 5525 Broadway Ave. This free training gets citizens ready to respond and provide assistance during weather-related and other emergencies. For information and to register, you can call the Emergency Management Office at 817-759-8506. The Haltem City Government Access Channel, Channel 7, available through Charter Cable, is moving to Channel 27. Charter Cable will make the change sometime before the end of February. HCTV is not going away, just moving up the dial. City offices will be closed this Monday, February 19th, in observance of President's Day. And all of the above information may be obtained through the city's information line by dialing 817-222-7768, or you can access our website at www.haltemcitytx.com, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. I want to remind all of our citizens, while I'm not a tax preparer, I do know that the earned income tax credit is very important, and lots and lots of people don't file for it when they're eligible. My suggestion is, if you think you could stand an extra dollar or two, that you check it out, and then you'll know, earned income tax credit. All right, the next order is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. And with that, I'll take a move. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the consent as it was presented.
And Mr. Sutton.
That's for a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the dais? If not, please register your vote. And it is unanimous. Mr. Dale Clark is absent tonight. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, Consideration or Action Regarding the First Reading, Approving the First Reading of a Sex Offender Ordinance, which will provide additional protection from sexual predators. This is the first reading, and Chief, you want to tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Chief Everett is providing a graphic up here that citizens are welcome to look at a little bit later, and I've also got some copies. What this ordinance will allow the city of Haltem City to do is follow suit with many of the cities in Tarrant and Dallas Counties and even some other outlying counties, to create safety zones for Haltem City's children where sex offenders cannot set up residence. What we are proposing is a thousand-foot buffer zone. It protects areas or entities that where typically children would gather, such as schools, daycare centers, parks, those kinds of things. And it would prohibit a registered sex offender who was guilty of an offense involving a child under 17 years of age from setting up residence in that thousand-foot zone. The map that I provided you would show you where those zones would actually would be affected, and also, it shows you where the sex offenders that are currently registered, of which there are 86 in Haltem City, currently reside. It's important to note that the current sex offenders who are living within those safety zones would not be required to move. But if they move within Haltem City, they would become subject to the ordinance. So it grandfathers those sex offenders that are already living in one of those safety zones. We believe that it's prudent for the council to consider and approve this ordinance strictly from the standpoint that other area cities are doing so. It may very well end up in the courts at some later date and the ordinance be found not appropriate or something, but that's in the future. And until that happens, we are recommending that the council approve this ordinance to protect the citizens and children of Haltem City. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Burton, you had answered some questions in the pre-session for me. Just out of curiosity, in the event that BISD was to build a new school, say, 10 years from now, would this ordinance, as it's written, or would state law already put in a new safety zone, or is that something we would have to revisit at that time?
Actually, if the school, if the, it would work kind of like it is right now. Say we built a new school right here where City Hall is, well, this would become a safety zone. Any sex offender that was living in this area currently would be grandfathered, but no one would be allowed to move into that safety zone without being in violation of the ordinance.
Okay, but we wouldn't have to revisit this ordinance to...
No, sir.
To redo that?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, two things. One thing that we mentioned back in the pre-council was that Senator Nelson has approached the Attorney General to try to get a ruling on this ordinance, and the Attorney General has not responded back, correct?
That's correct, and I believe she did that on the behalf of the city of Watauga.
Right.
And they have not heard anything. I checked with the Director of Public Safety just this past week to see if there were any progress there, and they have not heard anything from the HE's office.
And the second thing that Councilmember Holcomb brought up in there about the library, that that's something that currently is not on there, but could be added at a later date whenever we find out a little bit more about the ordinance and if it's going to pass court muster.
I'm sure the city attorney will correct me if my language gets out of line here, but the city always reserves the right to make a, we can be more strict than state law, we just can't be less strict. So, once the library's built, if the council wanted to add libraries to that listing, then I think we would be well within our rights.
Okay.
Right now, our city ordinance mirrors what state law defines as a children, a place where children would gather, and it includes four or five different places there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question for the chief? Thank you, Chief. May want to hang around, this is billed as a public hearing slash ordinances, so I'm gonna go ahead and open this, open up a public hearing. Do we have any questions, statements from the audience? Ms. Edens? Okay. We noticed that.
Mayor, I will make these maps available for citizens right up here.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I want to thank the chief, I want to thank the city council, one, for even considering this, and two, I sure do thank you if you're seriously thinking about passing this, because this is a first step towards protecting the children of Haltem City. This council has done more proactive safety and protection actions for this city than any council I have ever seen. So go for it, guys, we sure do need it, and gals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public hearing? Not all. Close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I propose, I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 02007-007-04, the Sex Offender Safety Zone Ordinance.
On the first reading?
That would be for the first reading, yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cabano.
That's for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 02007-007-04, and first reading. Any further discussion? If not, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, item seven, ordinance number 02007-008-04, Consideration or Action Regarding the Approving the First Reading of a Hotel Ordinance, Requiring Hotel and Motel Operators to Require Valid Identification from Guests. And this will be, again, a first reading.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance would require motel guests in our city to provide valid identification when they rent a motel room in the city. The managers or operators of the motels would be required to retain that information in a record of their choosing for inspection up to two years. And when we review the calls for service and incidents in the city, we find a disproportionate amount of calls for service, and our resources are focused on nine motels in the city.
Thank you, Chief Everett. Any questions for the chief? Mr. Sutton.
Just a comment. Thank you for the offense statistics that you provided for us, that was helpful.
And Mr. Hutchinson.
Deputy Chief, could you explain to us, sort of detail to us, exactly what you mean by a valid identification, sir?
Well, we will, of course, be training the motel operators in the city in a valid or be an official, state-approved identification is what would be required. So something issued by the state with their photo on it is pretty the normal interpretation of that.
Any other question from the dais? Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. I may be wrong here, but just reading through the ordinance as it was prepared for us, when it talks about the personal identification, it doesn't specify state-approved. Is that something that ought to be added, Wayne, or...
I'm thinking from all of the discussion we're having on this subject, it is something that ought to be added. We ought to clarify that. Instead of saying official photo identification, we ought to reference the fact that it's got to be a state-issued or state-approved identification, photo identification.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Everett? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience? Chief, can you tell us if a passport is a valid ID?
I believe a valid passport would be acceptable as an official valid ID.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 02007-2008-04, the Hotel Ordinance, on first reading and with the recommended changes to the ordinance for better specification for valid ID in the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, sir, and that's for a second.
Mr. Sutton.
That's for a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 02007-008-04. Is there any further discussion? If not, please register your votes. And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, ordinance number 02007-009-04, Consideration or Action Regarding Approving the First Reading of an Animal Ordinance to More Closely Mirror State Law and Provide for Several Important Service Changes, and this will be for the first reading. Lieutenant Roper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The current city of Haltem...
Can you go ahead, Rocky, and bring that mic up there to you? It's a long ways up there.
Okay. The current city of Haltem City ordinance regulating animals requires that these amendments to more closely mirror the state law and provide for several important service changes. The amendment will increase our ability to resolve animal issues, provide enhanced service, and promote the health, safety, and welfare of Haltem City citizens. And it'll provide us with authority to take action on private property, not in a residence when we have violations. And it'll establish basically prohibitions against people that interfere with us, along with other items that are in the ordinance. And our recommendation is we, basically, you enact this ordinance for the benefit of the city, if there's any questions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Reese.
You knew that was coming, okay.
We suspected it.
First question, and this is more, because I asked it back there, I need to know what our field hours and our shelter hours are, so more than just me and who was back here? No.
Okay. Aaron Cordell will give that information to you. He's the supervisor at the animal services.
Our current hours right now are shelter hours, which you're able to view the animals as open to the public, would be Tuesday through Saturday from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday from noon until 5:00. The week of March 1st, which would be February 26th, those hours are going to change from Monday from 1:00 to 6:00, Tuesday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday from noon until 5:00. So we're broadening those hours, we'll be open, we'll be available for the public a lot more. Field hours, as of right now, it's Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and starting, I believe it's, the Monday, March 12th, we'll be going to new field hours, and we'll be available from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM until Monday, November 5th, which is the close of the daylight savings times.
And that's Monday through...
That's Monday, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And how many calls for service do we have since you guys are backlogged when y'all come in in the morning? That was something the chief mentioned, that when y'all come in in the morning...
Yes, ma'am.
The reason there's a delay in response, my opinion of response time, is because you're already behind the eight ball. So how many calls for service on a stray animal or a barking dog or...
I don't have it broken down by a...
You can just give me like a real general...
Well, as far as calls for services, an exact number for last year, we had 3,967 calls for service.
Out of how many animal control officers?
We have, we currently have four.
That are on the road, including yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
And something that I want, I guess, clarification for is if a citizen has an issue with a dog, be it a stray dog, a neighbor's dog, causing chaos in that neighborhood, they call you guys, and eventually y'all show up, and they've already put the dog away, okay? What is the procedure they need to take from there on out if they say, "This dog is a nuisance, it scares me, it scares my kid, it may bite my kid"? What can they do?
We recently just changed our policy. In the past, the officer, just like a police officer would have witnessed the violation to take legal action. We've currently changed that where we can issue a citation on the complainant's behalf. When we arrive on scene, if there's still, if the violation has, the dog is no longer loose, or whatever the violation is, if it's already ceased by the time we get there, then we'll call the complainant or go to the complainant's address and ask if they're willing to take that avenue, which basically they'll sign the back of a citation. We'll issue a citation on the complainant's behalf, they'll set a court date, and they'll tell their side, the complainant will tell their side, the animal owner will tell their side, the judge will have the final disposition.
Okay, but when y'all, when you're out there, you, or whomever...
Correct.
Y'all are going to be very informative of the so-called complainant to make sure they understand this is the policy, this is what needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am. It is policy that if we get there and there's no longer a violation, that it's policy that we notify that complainant of that option.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you said all this went through the Animal Advisory Board, right?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so.
I was thinking on the first memo we got, that the board had already okayed the changes...
Are you talking about the ordinance?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
When did that go through to them? Do you remember?
I don't have an exact date, no, ma'am. It was a...
I think we're off the topic of the ordinance right now. We can go back and look at the notes of the Animal Control Board meeting and find out when they were presented with the ordinance, but all of the changes presented in the ordinance have been presented to the Animal Control Board, and they agree with them in post, how do you say that? In its entirety.
Okay.
We can provide that in the second reading. We'll give you that date.
Now, the other question, talking about the hours and those kinds of things, those are not part of the ordinance. Those are just policies. What Aaron was talking about was a policy change that we had made internally, and that was not presented to the Animal Control Board. That's a management prerogative.
And I guess, Mr. City Attorney, we do need to stick to the ordinance, is that correct? What's on the agenda?
I think the questions being asked are...
Will be, all right? Okay, all right, well, I appreciate it. Ms. Reese, go ahead. You have any, that's it? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other question from the dais on the animal control? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. Thank you, Lieutenant Roper. And anybody got any questions or comments from the audience regarding the animal control ordinance that's been presented? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 0-2007-009-04, Animal Ordinance, and that is the first reading.
Ms. Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second, and on the second reading, y'all will bring the information Ms. Reese asked for. asked for.
Yes, the main information, I think, is the, the date that it was presented to the Animal Advisory Board. Is that, is that correct? Is that the, is that right? Okay, we'll have that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the animal control ordinance 02007-009-04 on first reading. Any further discussion? If not, please register your vote. That is unanimous. Thank you, Chief, and Rocky, and Ron, appreciate you. Next item on the agenda is item nine, P-023-06, conduct a public hearing and consideration or action regarding the application of Chad Alvarez of Insight Capital Realty Company for the final plat of Lot 1R Block 1, Meacham Industrial Park Edition being a replat of Lot 1 Block 1, Meacham Industrial Park Edition and tract 6B of the Green B. Stanley Survey Abstract 1378 in the M1 Industrial District, containing approximately 2.7235 acres of land located in the north side of Meacham Boulevard known as 4041 Meacham Boulevard. This is a public hearing continued from the January 22nd meeting. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, citizens of Haltum City, as you'll recall from the January 22nd meeting, when we convened the public hearing, this final plat was recommended for denial to the City Council by the P&amp;Z. The recommended denial was due to the incompleteness of the application. However, on January 26th, we did present a letter or correspondence we received from their attorney, Mr. Robert Miklos, outlining items that we needed to address. In addition, they requested that they extend the public hearing to this February 12th council meeting and waive the 30-day processing requirement for plats. Again, we extended the public hearing that would enable staff and members of Insight Capital Realty to resolve issues regarding this plat application. The, if you'll recall, the Council voted unanimously to extend the public hearing that we have tonight. Again, then, in between tonight and this meeting, staff in Insight Capital and their respective attorneys met on January 30th, 2007. At this meeting, we discussed the outstanding items for this plat application. As a result, all of the issues seem to be resolved, however, making all the needed revisions or the documents that we need for tonight's hearing, they have not been completed. Therefore, Insight Capital, through their attorney, has requested extending this public hearing to the February 26th, 2007 meeting in order to complete these necessary revisions. In addition, they continue to waive the 30-day processing requirement, if you'll note, on the attached correspondences that we received on February 7th and February 8th of 2007. Again, these are two letters from Mr. Robert Miklos, their attorney, requesting that we extend this hearing to the February 26th meeting. Staff is in full agreement of this and request of the Council, please, to try to take this action.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions for James? All right, being done, I'll open up public hearing. Any questions from the audience regarding this application for continuation? There being none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have a procedural question-
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
-that I needed to ask first. We're only deciding about 10, and number 11 also pertains to this.
No.
Like I said, we're doing number nine.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're doing-
Only nine.
I'll get there. I'm jumping ahead of myself. If we were to approve nine, and, and maybe you can answer this, Mr. Pliska, you said that the letters request an extension. If we approve the preliminary and wait for the extension, do we, do we approve number 10 at the same time?
No, sir. We're, we're doing nine and-
Oh, that's right.
-10 and 11 are two together.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking it was nine and 10 there.
We're asking just to simply continue this hearing into the next meeting. Because I, because tonight, and it, it can be confusing because we've got several plats here. I don't have the paperwork necessary for us to recommend that.
Okay, that's, that's where my confusion's coming from.
If, if you wanted to dispose of it, you, we would recommend denying it, but we're, we're actually recommending continuing the public hearing.
Yeah, and that's, that was the basis of my question, and I think he's kind of cleared that up. So therefore, and thereby, I make a motion that we continue this, that we table it for a later period of time, or to the February 26th.
If you would comment, if you would include in your motion the waiving the 30-day requirement?
Oh, okay. And including, yeah, that's, that is correct.
I'm sorry, was that what you were going to say, Wayne? I'm sorry.
That's one thing, and the other thing is this will actually be a continuance of the public hearing, so the public hearing will be reopened on February 26th.
Okay, so it was inappropriate for me to close it. It's just, it's just not closed.
You closed it for tonight, but it's not officially closed if we get that motion on the table.
Thank you, sir.
I can't even get the plat, the number right, so I'll, I'll defer to the attorney.
Now, what, what was your motion again?
Does the City Secretary have that motion or not?
Does somebody else want to make this?
Okay, Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to move to continue the public hearing for final plat number P-
The motion's already been made.
Oh, then second.
Okay.
I tried the best I could, Jim.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I didn't know if that-
I just messed up.
Did that make, okay.
Where's Curly and Moe? I don't know. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. Brenda, could you see that the minutes show that the applicant continued to waive that 30-day requirement?
Right.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded to continue the P-023-06 until February 26th. Is there any further discussion? Please register your votes. All right, it is unanimous, and that, that will be continued until February 26th. Items number 10 and 11, P-024-06 and P-025-06, conduct a public hearing and consideration or action regarding the application of Ernie Hedgecote on behalf of owner Fred Shin for the preliminary plat of Lot 1 Block 1 Shin Edition being a tract of land out of the George Acres Survey Abstract 30 locally known as 6559 Midway, and then the -025-06 is the final plat. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council. Again, this is a preliminary and final plat for a tract of land. It is not a legal lot of record, hence the need for the preliminary and the final plat. We'll be treating those together. I will bring up the site plan during the final plat presentation. The applicant is proposing to remodel an existing facility for a foundation drilling company. He is exceeding 51% of the appraised value of the structure and therefore triggering the plat requirements. He will extend the sanitary sewer. He will put in a looped fire system. He will also then address the drainage, which we asked for at the preliminary plat. It is a good, clean plat. Mr. Hedgecote is the representative for the Shin Company. On the final plat, P-25, we are submitting a site plan with that. In addition to the final plat, which is a mirror of the preliminary plat, we're indicating what he intends to do at the site. As we stated previously, with plating, there are certain things that will trigger with his project, and he has to bring them up to certain codes. Again, he is not changing the footprint of the facility. It will remain the same, but he's going to go inside and remodel over 51% of it. Due to this, then, he will pave the front portion of the site, therefore provide for paved parking, which is not in existence at this time, and he will also landscape the site, therefore bringing up the appraised values of this particular piece of property and make it a nice area for this particular area of the city, located in the 6,500 block of Midway. Again, he's doing extensive remodeling. He is running the required fire system here and the, extend the sanitary sewer, and therefore I'm formally submitting this site plan, the preliminary plat, and the final plat, and staff is recommending approval of these two items.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions for James on the, the preliminary plat and the final, or the final plat he won? Any questions? Not, I'll open up public hearing. Any questions or statements, Mr. Hedgecote? You want to come up and introduce yourself?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernest Hedgecote, representing Mr. Shin in this preliminary and final plating. As James mentioned, the, they're going to be remodeling about 2,500 square feet of their building, which is about the first two bays of the existing building. Over the years, they've just kind of built rooms and hallways and different things, and it's just kind of like a maze in there now. So we're going to take all of that out and reestablish some organized offices the way they want them to be, and that's the main reason for all of this. We are going to exceed the 51% of the value of the property. We have, as James mentioned, we've included a fire lane, which will all be paved. We've also going to have a water looping system and adding two fire hydrants. That'll give us more fire protection. And then the landscaping, and we are going to place the sidewalk in along the Midway Road. This is going to be the beginning of the Midway Corridor Improvement District. So anyway, I appreciate it, and I have to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Hedgecote? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public to make, make comments or ask questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing and we'll, we'll vote on these separately. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of P-024-06. Mr. Cabano?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's, I'd like to make a motion to accept P-024-06 for the first reading.
Yes, no first reading, it's just-
No.
It's just-
For the preliminary plat, sorry.
It's either approved or not.
It's approved.
And you're recommending approval. Okay, Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. For a second.
Been moved and seconded to approve P-024-06. Any further discussion on the dais? If not, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. We'll now entertain a motion to dispose of item 11, P-025-06. Mr. Cabano?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's to accept the final plat on P-025-06 and as a final, I'm not sure, final plat.
And Mr. Sutton?
That's a second for the final plat.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve P-025-06, the final plat. Any further discussion? If not, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. All right, we're going to take a little five-minute break before this next item. I'll tell you what, make it seven minutes. At five minutes to eight on that clock right there, we will be back in here. This is P-027-06, a plat, conduct a public hearing and consideration and/or action regarding the application of Birdville Independent School District for the preliminary plat of Lot 1 Block 94, Branding Heights East Edition in the CF District, Community Facilities District, to be treated as a C3, containing approximately 7.934 acres of land located in the Williams Screech Survey Abstract 1416 locally known as 4,200 dough line. Okay, James?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, Mayor, thank you for the break so we can set up the equipment. Citizens of Haltum City, this is an exciting project. The applicant, BISD, is proposing to develop a new school facility. At this site, you'll see tonight, BISD will construct the new school facility while maintaining operations within the existing older facility. Planning and zoning heard this on their January 26th, 2006, P&amp;Z, actually, that should be 2007, sorry for the misprint. At that meeting, they unanimously recommended that this preliminary plat move forward. Now, again, tonight is just a preliminary plat, and there will be another hearing for the final plat on this project. And tonight's focus basically will be on the facilities itself, and of course, they are addressing some of the drainage issues that we normally occur, or that we normally look at during the preliminary process. So therefore, I'm formally submitting information from the applicant's engineering company and large size for your viewing tonight, the preliminary plat, site plan information and drainage information. And then, of course, Mr., when you call forward for people, Mayor, Mr. Ronnie Carruthers of BISD will then introduce his team for this project, and I stand to answer any questions, Mayor.
Excuse me, any questions for James? All right, thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll open up the public hearing. And Mr. Carruthers, you want to come forward and introduce your presentation team?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of Council, Birdville ISD, we're excited about this project, and we've been working with the city, all of the engineers and all of the inspectors and all of the entities, the fire department, and we're really excited about this. HKS, the district has selected HKS to be our design architectural firm, and Strickland Rollins, they're our engineer firm. And so tonight, they're going to give you a little short presentation and kind of let you see what's been going on. Mark Vannevoort is the lead person with HKS, and his assistant is Mr. Greg Franca, and our engineer, Sanford Leahue with Strickland Rollins, and Linda Jordan. So with that, I'll turn it over right now to Mark Vannevoort.
Thank you, Ronnie, and Mayor, and Council members. We have here the same exact PowerPoint show that we presented to P&amp;Z back in January and thought that you might get a good overview on the project with this presentation. Go ahead, Greg. We pointed out that among all the considerations in designing a school, certainly, the site plan considerations are some of the most important, and they include many different aspects of design, and we've tried to address all these issues with onsite personnel at the school as well as community members, as well as city representatives. Go ahead. Here you see an existing aerial photograph of the existing Stowe Elementary School site. And here you see kind of a quick site analysis, which indicates these sort of green zones of the, of the site are areas that need to remain in operation during the construction of a replacement school. And you see issues, climatological issues such as west sun, winter wind, summer breeze, access here to Haltum Road on these streets, a drainage arrow which indicates that the site is sloping basically from the southwest to the northeast. There are some rectangles here indicating areas where the school has geothermal wells that provide air conditioning support for the existing school. And here you see a proposed site plan, and the proposed site plan employs an L-shaped school building that resides on the northeast corner of the site. This is the position, and you'll see in a minute, kind of an X-ray view, but the classroom wing is on the north side of the site, on Mack Road, and the cafeteria, cafeteria gymnasium and administration areas on the east side of the site. We're proposing to provide a, sort of a loop drive-through parking area with a bus drop and access to loading dock on the east side of the building, and then on the backside to, to provide a parent drop, which has many spaces of onsite queuing, as opposed to the kind of queuing that currently takes place on the public streets. You can see the length of queuing space that, that's going to be developed on, on the site. This concept, we refer to it as the patio, and this, this is in keeping with a recent project that Birdville ISD's built over in North Richland Hills, which is the Walker Creek Elementary School. And you can see that this school is reminiscent of that design. It's L-shaped. It has the interior L that embraces the, the green space of, for the community and allows for a very effective parent drop and pickup. And also, this will be gated, as it is at Walker Creek, in such a way that there will be no cars and no parking spaces in this area during the school day. This doubles actually as a paved playground area for the children. These lines that you see here are existing trees that we, we hope to salvage, and they'll form a nice buffer around the southwest corner of the site. form a nice buffer around the southwest corner of the site. Okay? Here you see the existing school, and we're proposing to fence this area, and this will be the construction zone, and for a while, these will both be active at the same time, but these are the areas, again, that need to remain in operation. Just for your information, the school is set up with a two-story classroom wing that has the younger grade levels arranged in grade level pods, like schools within a school, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade on the first floor, the upper grade levels on the second floor. The library is centrally located as a resource. These sort of teal-colored classrooms are flex classrooms that respond to program needs for each of those grade levels, and they're anticipated to change over time as their needs change. The administration is located here, that's an administrative office suite that can supervise the entire school from the central location, the gymnasium, activities, cafeteria, kitchen, music, and stage facing the cafeteria. Here you see the second floor. Each of the grade level pods is clustered around a teeming area, which provides an open space, unassigned space for collaborative learning. And then we have these various views, which are just cartoons, they're not intended to be photorealistic at this point, but these are sort of accurately drawn and represent what the site would look like after the old school, which resides here, is demolished. And here you see the library, the entry tower, administrative suite, the gymnasium, stage, cafeteria, and here, the two-story classroom wing. And we've tried to break up the facade of the classroom wing into smaller pieces along the length of Mack Street. This is a view from the northwest. This would be a faculty parking lot. There would be a small amount of visitor parking and a small amount of faculty parking on the east side of the school, which you'll see in a minute, but the majority of the faculty will park here where they have access directly into the classroom wing. Here's the east parking lot, this is the bus area, there will be some visitors parking near the front door, and then other faculty that park here will either work in the kitchen, the music room, the gymnasium, or the administration areas. Here you see a view from the southwest corner with some of the existing trees proposed to be saved, and you see there's a canopy leading into each one of the pods, and there's a backdoor entrance into the nexus of the school, the gymnasium and cafeteria. The cafeteria has a covered patio area which can actually act as an outdoor stage, or can facilitate community functions such as barbecues, carnivals, those kinds of things. This is a view from Mack Street, looking at the proposed entryway. A ground-level view from the southwest corner, and an aerial view showing, again, the finished This is a view, again, of the east side of the parking lot, and a view looking up Mack Street. And here's a view from Mack Street with the classroom wing broken up, as I described. Our anticipated schedule is to issue plans to the marketplace and for permit in late April, to award a construction contract by mid-June, to complete the new buildings by early June of 2008, and begin demolition after the school year is over, to complete the demolition and renovation of the site over that summertime, and be open for school for the fall semester of 2008. So with that, if you have any questions, or if there's others that might...
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions on Rita Street, where you said there's a loading dock, and also where bus access is. Rita Street wide enough? Is it accessible, and what kinds of trucks will be entered in for the loading docks are?
Apparently, the turning radius, turning radii are adequate for those movements, for those types of vehicles.
Off-street, off-street turning?
Off-street turning, to go from the street into the parking area, into the service drive, and out.
Okay, and bus, you know, for walking traffic and buses coming, I know there's going to be heavy traffic in the morning times, and in the afternoon with the buses coming in, and I'm sure that trucks don't come in at the same time, buses do.
They don't come in at the same time.
Okay, so the, but Rita Street is big enough to handle that kind of traffic?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton?
Thanks, Mayor. Two questions. Geothermal wells, are you going to keep them, are you going to do new ones, or how are you going to work with those?
The plan is to provide new wells.
Okay.
And then to salvage existing ones if they prove to be, what's the word, if they prove to be serviceable or warrantable.
Okay, all right. So you got to get down there and see them and inspect them?
But we do need to protect them, yeah, and we're planning to do some testing, once the contractor's on site. But going in, we're making plans for all-new if that's required.
Okay. It's a very aggressive schedule, it looks like to me, being a neophyte at construction, but it still looks pretty aggressive. One thing I saw in the playground area, whenever you begin the demolition in May 2008, and hopefully to be done when the school year starts, that would be seeding the grass at one of the most hottest times in Texas, which will be difficult for that playground to become usable. So are you not planning on having the playground usable for that first year?
Well, we'll be up against a little bit of a calendar issue, probably not being able to seed until late in the growing season.
Right.
But it's conceivable that we could have part of July, August, September into October to get some growth.
I see.
But I wouldn't expect that the playground area would be fully grown in during that first year.
Okay, so you're planning on doing, well, you have the new gym, of course, for the physical education program, but...
Yes, and we'll be sodding certain areas, and there will be playground areas which are on a different surface.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Reese?
I don't know if this one's going to be free. What was the determination for OH Stowe versus one of our other schools?
This was the one that was on the bond.
Well, there was a lot of stuff on the bond, that's...
No, I mean, this was the only elementary school that was on the bond issue. There was a, there was a pretty good-sized public task force from all over the Birdville Independent School District that...
That's correct. One of the reasons that OH Stowe was chosen, it's one of the older elementary schools, and plus it's in a zone that we need capacity, and so we're hoping, you know, we're anticipating some growth in Haltem City, and there's some apartment complexes and things that possibly could come up. But if no growth is there, OH Stowe will actually help us in the west zone as far as handling capacity, and we need, right now, a lot of our campuses are overcrowded, and we need that capacity.
Okay, and the other one is, is the gates that you've got, I guess it's in the back on each end? Are they going to be like on timers, or, I mean, because I'm looking at from a safety standpoint, if something, God forbid, ever happened, and we had to get the kids out of the school, and get whatever vehicles up there? I mean, is that triggered?
Well, the fire department will have access 24 hours a day.
Okay, so there shouldn't be any hampering of the children? If one decides they want to run across the parking lot for whatever reason, that there wouldn't be a car coming?
That's correct.
I'm just looking at kindergartners, first graders, and...
The anticipation is that those gates are electronically controlled.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Sutton?
Just about that access discussion about that, from what I understand about the design of the school, that the only access during school hours would be at the front center entrance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Where there's also, I should have mentioned, a safety vestibule. In other words, when you enter the tower, you must go into the reception area and be greeted accordingly. You will not be able to go straight in, those doors are going to be on a separate controller, they can be exit doors, but you cannot gain entrance.
Isn't that just exactly like it is over at Walker Elementary?
Yes.
I mean, I've been in that building before, they've got that access area closed off at certain periods of time.
And diverted into the reception area.
Right, and it's going to be exactly like that, okay.
Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. If there are no other questions from the dais, I'll open up the public hearing. Have any questions or comments? Oh, please, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
I'm Joy Queen. I live at 5308 McQuade Street, which is just a little ways away from OH Stowe. I attended the planning and zoning meeting and expressed concern then about the amount of vehicles that'd be in that area during construction, and how those things would be handled. There was another lady who was there, who lives catty-cornered across from the main entrance to the new building, that expressed a grave concern about the amount of floodwaters, amount of waters during any rain that would be coming into her property, which is already, the waters are already coming all the way up to her garage doors because of the inadequate amount of drainage that's in that area now. And there was no mention of any city-planned improvement for the drainage areas, the storm stores and those things in that area. These are some concerns that we have about the time during the construction of the school, and then afterward, whenever the citizens that are living in that immediate area around the school are experiencing very severe problems with their homes because of the way that the water is flooding into their homes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Queen, and we've got...
The name is Queen, I live on McQuade.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Queen. Looked like there's several questions. Mark, have you got an answer on construction, the drainage during construction? Can you address that?
Yeah, we have our civil engineer, Sanford Leehue, who has some comments on that.
Mayor, members of the council, Sanford Leehue, I work for Strickland-Rollins Associates. We've been working with the city engineer on the drainage. One of the items on your consent agenda tonight was adopting your master storm drain plan, and this part of town is a major part of that. The storm drain system is inadequate for most of that area, and what we've been instructed to do is release at a two-year design, which is pretty much hardly anything. Most places release a 25-year design or 100-year. We're going to implement some underground detention and some surface detention, and limit our release to a two-year design. We can't solve all the problems over there by taking care of the school's drainage. If there's problems in the area, we still may encounter some of those areas, but we will not be contributing to that any longer. So we're going to have to limit our storm drainage improvements to the site, but we've taken all the measures and worked very closely with staff to minimize those and to reduce our amount of runoff.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Since we're talking drainage, let me address the city side of that. I've already directed staff to reevaluate those streets over there, not just from a drainage standpoint, but for everything. Maybe we need to reprioritize some things because of the school going in there and the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, we may need to take a look and shuffle some things around and deal with that. But we are, we are looking at that. But I have, that's about all I can say right now, that we're looking at, I don't know what the results are going to be, but we are dealing with it. And parking, was that the other question? Parking?
I don't think there was a parking.
She had a question about parking, construction, contractors, parking.
Yeah, where the construction, yeah, where the construction traffic is going to go, that will, I guess that would be inside the fence, would it not?
Inside the fence, and as directed by the city, and it's really the contractor's needs and methods.
Sure. I would assume that the contractors would either get there before schoolchildren are getting there, or they would get there after. Certainly, it wouldn't be wise to be trying to buck all that traffic, get big rigs in there, but does that answer some of your questions, Ms. Queen? I think, and I don't know, Tom, can we say that it's not going to get better? The drainage issue's not going to get better, but it's not going to get worse?
I think we're very sensitive to the drainage issues, because BISD and their consultants have made significant changes to the drainage recently. Is that accurate? Looking at the engineer back there, I'm sorry. With that in mind, being sensitive to the drainage that's there. So I think, you know, designing it to a two-year event is, that's, it's coming a very, very long way. I think they've done everything they can do. There may be some things from the city standpoint that we could do to help improve the problem. But it's, drainage has been a problem over there for quite a while, as you stated, and we're going to do our best to, at a minimum, at least not make it any worse, and see what we can do to make it better.
Several of the streets that are immediately around that area are streets that were put in by the developers whenever that area was developed. A lot of those curbs are almost standing on edge now. Any additional traffic in there of heavy equipment is going to make the streets much more, have much more problems than what they have right now, and I think that the city needs to seriously look at what you're mentioning, that there be something further done with that, as well as the drainage that is existing between Rita and Denton Highway.
You're right. Yeah, I was driving over there a couple of weeks ago, and that's what made me think about it, because I thought about those exact same things.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Anybody else want to make comments or ask questions in this public hearing? Not I'll close the public hearing, and I just want to say, I'm excited about the construction of this new elementary school. I've actually been walked through the Walker Elementary and seen what a fantastic place that is, and when this goes up, people's eyes are going to pop out of their heads when they drive by and see that in that neighborhood. It's really a beautiful thing, and besides the beauty, it's much safer and more secure, safer for traffic-wise, and much more secure for the teachers and children in that school building, so we're real excited. Thank you. All right, need a motion to dispose. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the preliminary plat number P-027-06, as presented this evening.
Mr. Cabano?
That's for a second, Mayor.
It's been moved in second to approve P-027-06. Excuse me, is any other, any other discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. We thank you, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Next on the agenda is, this is item number 13. This is a CC-01-07, consideration interaction regarding the application of Benny Loy for variance to resolution R206-026-15, Section 4, signed moratorium. City of Haltem City for relief of the moratorium on off-premise signs along the Belknap Corridor to change the face of an existing sign on Lot 12, Block 2, John W. Akers Edition, located on the south side of East Belknap, locally known as 5530 East Belknap Street. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Haltem City. On November 27, 2006, the City Council passed Resolution R2006-02615, declaring a 180-day moratorium for the applications for the issuance or renewal of permits for temporary or detached signs along the Belknap Corridor. Section 4 of the adopted resolution allows for any property owner affected by the signed moratorium to apply for a variance to the provisions of this moratorium. Mr. Benny Loy, owner of a new restaurant located at 5530 East Belknap, wishes to apply for relief from this signed moratorium. The owner wishes to replace the existing signed face with a new face indicating new ownership for the restaurant establishment. Mr. Loy is here, Mayor, and he's here to... Mr. Loy is here, Mayor, and he's here to address any questions. Staff recommends approval of the variance to the moratorium at 5530 East Belknap. The new signed face will bring the total area of the signed face into compliance with the city's signed ordinance for a pole sign. Therefore, I formally submit resolution R-2006-02615 for your review, letter from Mr. Loy indicating his situation, and existing and proposed sign information for your review.
Thank you, Ms. Pliska. Have any questions for James on this, this issue? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. Any, any questions, comments from the, from the audience concerning this application for variance? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the variance, variance, I'm sorry, variance to sign moratorium CC-001-07.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be for a second.
It's been moved and second to approve variance to the signed moratorium CC-001-07. Is there any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next on the agenda is our visitor citizens forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken as is not a posted agenda item in accordance with open meetings law. And first up to bat is Mr. Bill Journe, who wants to talk about the Belknap facade. Mr. Journe?
Thank you, council members. Kind of wish the high schoolers was back to help me sing this song. The Belknap facade, I think you call it a corridor, other people's money. This was a movie by, with Danny DeVito depicting how the very rich literally enjoyed playing games and living quite well on other people's money. I've even suggested at our lodge, we have more ballroom dances, get them in, entertain the people, and let them pay our rent. Nothing wrong with that. Put a carrot on the stick, but don't put the cart before the horse. St. Mark, a church I belong to in Oklahoma City, we had 400 members who voted to expand our church and get more members in. We lost merely, nearly half of our congregation who didn't support this imagination. To this day, 10 years after, we've hardly retrieved a 400 membership. And with the high school gone now, no hope for growth, let alone maintenance for our grand facade. Lyrics from a Bob Dylan song, "Like a Rolling Stone," sort of compares our government to the lobbyist by the people. Did you ever see the frown on the jugglers and the clowns when they did tricks for you? Don't you know, it ain't no good? You shouldn't let other people get your kicks for you. Outsourcing our responsibilities to insurance and business really doesn't work, really isn't working. Ask any cop, not in our jurisdiction. Facade, well, that's, it's not even spelled the way it sounds. Facade is a front. Theaters and carnivals use them quite effectively, for instance, for instant gratification and an invasive fast buck. Facades often do not portray reality. Ask anyone in advertising or marketing. Facades generally are not permanent. So how can you convince us that the Belknap corridor is any more than a facade for a political pipe dream? That 10 years later, we will not be singing Peggy Lee's popular song? Is that all there is to a circus? Is that all, all there is to your facade? We might want our money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Journe. The, that's all the yellow applications I have. Can you get done in three minutes, Trey?
Sure, minute and a half.
All right, well, give us, give us your name and address, please.
Trey Fowler, 6217 Midway, Fort Worth, Texas. As always, it's a pleasure to come before you tonight, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a question. I had some disturbing rumor, and you had helped a little bit in the break explain some of it. The last meeting, we, we came before you and spoke from a rental ordinance, there's a lot of the individuals that were here tonight that were, that spoke at that time also, and we were told that y'all were going to provide a workshop in regards to the rental ordinance? And then, son, my understanding now that it's been changed, is that, can you give me some enlightenment?
No, I think what we said the last time was that we would form a, a group, and, and Mr. Mayor would lead that effort to make some recommended changes to that, and then we'd have a public workshop where everybody'd be invited, and we'll, we'll discuss it openly then, and everybody can have their input.
Okay, and that group, it's my understanding there's going to be five people selected, or is that kind of what y'all were talking about?
In, in that neighborhood. I don't know, Tom, if you said it on a number yet?
It's probably going to be larger than that.
What would the selection process be?
I haven't given it a whole lot of thought.
Do y'all know when it might take place or how soon?
We'll probably start meeting in March.
Excuse me, point of order? This is not on the agenda, so we have to be very careful.
I mean, we can, we can respond to factual, with factual things, can we not? Or, I mean, we, saying I don't know is not factual, I, I, well, maybe it is, I don't know, but if we're, are we going astray here, Mr. City Attorney?
The rule is, I think the city secretary is trying to keep you in line, but the rule is?
No, she's right, I mean, I don't want to go too far.
Rational response of city policy, and, and Mr. Fowler, probably would be best if, if you got with Mr. Muir or the mayor or somebody that can answer your questions.
Can we, can I publicly then ask for an open records request at this point, where you could keep in contact, or we just need to send one in?
You're going to have to, if you want an open records request, you're going to have to fill out the form and send it in.
Okay, and would that be dealing with any information as far as the timing or?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Well, I just want to know anything that's going on in the rental ordinance, you know, I mean, we were?
You can, you can ask that when you, when you get with the city secretary. Again, we're way off, I can't, way off, this is not on the agenda.
Okay.
But when you fill out your open records request with the city secretary, she can hopefully, you know, help you and get to where you're needing to go.
Okay.
With what you're wanting.
Okay, well, I'll do that, and then I'll be back again on the first, just to ask and make sure. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else want to speak to? Yes, please come forward and, and give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Don Cooperers out at 1516 Oatnall Drive, and I noticed you have three minutes, I'll be brief. I appreciate the demeanor of the council, I appreciate the demeanor of the mayor and all of you guys that are here on the rental ordinance. I was encouraged to hear there is going to be a workshop, and that was one of the reasons I came tonight, because we hadn't had word. And I would just like, the group that was here, I felt like conducted themselves pretty good. We had a couple that, you know, but for the, for the part that I've been in meetings like that with the heat of the moment, I thought they really did well. And my only thought would be, I hope that whoever the people are that y'all pick to work with the committee, it'll be broad-based enough that everybody will get represented. And I feel like if everybody gets represented and everybody gets heard, then that'll help squash some of the heat that's developing out there, and so I just share that with you. And I welcome an opportunity to be at the meeting and hear what goes on, and would be glad to help the council in any way that I can, that we can resolve these issues in a way that will work for everybody in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Ecklin, please introduce yourself.
My name's Ray Ecklin, I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. Just to further address this, comments that Mr. Fowler made, I obtained a copy of the last council meeting through the open records request, and I examined it and wrote a story quoting, complete with the timestamps next to it, exactly what was said by the council members regarding the workshop, and then finally, 10 minutes later, what the city manager said about the workshop. And all the public is welcome to come read that. It's about the fourth story down on the front page of www.haltumcitycitizen.com. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Saying none, I close the, what are they, visitor cities forum, citizens forum, and we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is under boards and commissions, number, item 14, resignation of board members. Have any resignations to consider tonight? Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do have a resignation from the fire services board. Have a letter here from Ms. Cheryl Dixon, my appointment to the fire services board. She thanks the, thanks the city for the opportunity to serve on the fire board. She says it's become a good experience, which she's greatly enjoyed, and she, she's, thanks us for the confidence she's had in, in appointing her, and at this time, she'd like to tend to her resignation from the fire board so that she can consider being an appoint, being an appointment for another position on another board, and she feels like she can be of more service to the city on that board. So she is resigning from the fire services board. This is Cheryl Dixon.
All right, Mr. Sutton?
Did you want to vote on that one before you do mine, or did you want to go ahead and do them all in aggregate?
We can. Have you got another resignation?
Sure, right. I received a letter from Don Hudson of the CCPD stating that he had had some recent deaths in the family, and he needs to resign from the CCPD at this time, and so I just want to extend to him the, our council considerations for that, and hopefully that things can get better for him, but we just appreciate his service on the CCPD.
Okay, thank you. Any other resignations? Is, is there any discussion about voting separate versus together? Is, is, okay, well then?
I'm, I'm fine with voting in aggregate.
Okay, we'll, we'll just vote in aggregate. Please register your vote to accept these resignations. That is unanimous. Next item, item 15, appointment, reapportment to boards and commissions. Consider approval regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an appointment for the beautification board, and it's Rich, Cheryl Dickinson, Dixon. I'm sorry, she's asked to be a part of that board.
Okay, thank you. Any other appointments? And please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is excused absence of council members. We have one member absent, Mr. Dale Clark. Have a motion? Mr. Sutton?
From what I understand, he is doing public service out at the airport at work, and so I've moved to approve Dale's absence.
Thank you. We need a second. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That would be for a second.
Okay, it's been moved and second to excuse Mr. Clark. Mr. Hudson, you have some, oh, okay. It's been moved and second to excuse Mr. Clark. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Under section 551-071, 072 and 074, we will now go into executive session, and we will reconvene after the executive session.